Make us see on it, please.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Our grace heavenly father, we're thankful that we could come before the this day. We're thankful for all the many blessings that thou has blessed us with. We're thankful for that we were able to live in Cardston and the blessing that it is in our life. Help us that we may strive to make good choices around this table today, that we may be able to speak to each other kindly and represent the residents with love and respect. We're thankful for our area and we have a special blessing on those that are struggling or struggling due to COVID, that they may be able to feel better and be able to get back to work. We're grateful for all these things. We say them humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. So today is the 12th of January. It's hard to believe we already meet once. And it's a regular council meeting. So thank you to the media, Corrie Mackelsey for Channel 32, and thank you to our delegation, Sergeant Bob Wright, who is there for the RCMP. Thank you so much and welcome to the chambers. We are going to call a meeting to order. We have an agenda that needs to be adopted. So Counselor Brown?
Motion to adopt the agenda of today, the 12th day of January.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so Sergeant Bob Wright, if you'd like to come to the pulpit there and kind of give us the breakdown.
Run down there.
Yes.
I'll do my best to talk through the mask here. Appreciate you having me out this evening. Trust everybody's got a copy of the stats stuff. I think we sent them over last week. Just as we wrap up this year, looking at some of our overall numbers, I didn't see anything that was too out of line or too crazy, where we're going off the beaten track here, that I'm actually going to call our criminal operations division about. The one number that was, was up, and perhaps, I guess to our benefit, is you'll notice the persons lodged in cells. From first to the second quarter, some were double if not triple. What that mainly results from is an increase in foot patrols and stuff in the downtown core, and actually finding, you know, a lot of people that probably shouldn't be laying in the alley or behind cars or this and that. And, you know, we're putting to, putting them into a place that's, that's safe in the meantime until they're sober kind of thing, right? So I'm not concerned about that number right now. If it keeps escalating, at some point we say, yeah, this is, you know, we can attribute this to maybe, you know, good police work, maybe some social dynamics or something else going on in the community. But if I see that number continually on the rise, I might go back and revisit that, just see, okay, is, you know, are we taking too much credit here? Is there something else going on in the community? Like really do a deep dive into the files and the charges and stuff to the people that are in cells, and just, just to get a better, a better idea of why we're, we're seeing a continued escalation, right? As opposed to just, you know, initiatives put in place, like we want more foot patrols downtown kind of thing, right?
Sergeant Wright, can I ask you a question regarding one of the stats? One that interests me is the drugs one. Because it seems to me that year after year, that has kind of escalated somewhat. Can you help us understand what's going on? Obviously, the more you have of incidents, it's a good sign for me, knowing that the police is doing what they're supposed to do.
Yeah.
But what exactly is going on in this town regarding drugs?
So drugs trends typically follow, like different social dynamics and cohorts. So you may get, in a cohort for five years, a bunch of heavy drug users, you know, from the age to say like, you know, 19 to 24 kind of thing. And we'll have a lot of problems and we'll, you know, they'll create a lot of property crime. And, you know, we'll get a lot of charges off these guys, simple possession, maybe sometimes trafficking, this and that. And then eventually they kind of move on with their cohort and kind of move out of that area where they're just, that cohort isn't doing drugs anymore, or not as much, or not as prolific, right? They moved on to education or schooling or out of town, something like that, hopefully. So I think right now, the social dynamic is, yeah, we are seeing a rise in drug use in Southern Alberta, right? You know, that's not, you know, it's well reported on and the stats and facts and stuff are out there. We see more addictive type drugs. And again, if we get something that's highly addictive, we see people using more often. And of course, they've got to support those habits. And there's only so many ways to do that. And one of the obvious reasons, or I guess avenues there is to sell more drugs, right? To support your own habit. So we do see some of that going on with the, you know, very specific groups in town. You know, we're, very rarely do we get called to, like places like our high schools and things like that for, for drugs. It certainly does happen, but it's more the exception than it is the rule. Typically, our drug use in town right now goes hand in hand with, you know, substance and alcohol abuse. You know, we've got a large, you know, core of people that kind of hang out the downtown area, you know, that use everything from, you know, paint thinner to meth, right? So we see that, their drug trends kind of following that group around right now. As an overall escalation, you can see, from the first quarter, we had nothing and then we end up at, you know, 44 charges on the year. A lot of that, too, is initiative based. We want to go out, you know, we know there's drugs in the community, and what have we done so far about it? Right? So we want to go out, we want to build those initiatives. Yeah, we want to work this target, this project, whatever it is. And we want to get the people that are dealing and, you know, lay charges specific to them, in the hopes that the overall picture, the overall drug use in the community drops, right? So you're seeing more charges, but hopefully, again, that's a good thing, because the body of people that are doing drugs, hopefully that number is going down, because we're charging the people that are dealing, right? So.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Coak, Counselor Bengey?
This is a kind of a delicate question, but I checked the obituaries, make sure I'm not in it. There's an awful lot of very young people in the last month and a half. I don't, just wonder if there's any kind of a regional initiative to kind of get this thing under control, because they're dying at the ages of 16 and 18 and 21, and we're not just talking one or two.
Yeah, there's definitely.
It's very concerning.
Oh yeah, there's definitely some provincial initiatives out right now, like through the province and stuff. I mean, like, it's no secret that, I mean, we've been fighting fentanyl and car fentanyl now for, you know, a better part of, you know, five, six years, like quite heavily in Southern Alberta. And that number is increasing again with, you know, different social dynamic and cohort type groups. But yeah, the province definitely does have initiatives. We haven't, I, we don't really have anything put in place in town that we're implementing, like we're not, the people that we encounter that have these drugs, I mean, we certainly educate them in the moment, and there's, there's resources and, and numbers and places they can go for, for help. Unfortunately, some of these drugs are so addictive, so powerful, these people just, you know, they're, they're not interested in the moment, right? Like literally, you're seeing the obituaries full, because they're so addicted, they're doing them right up until the time they die. And again, you're saying, you know, it's a very young group, right? So.
Yeah.
But yeah, there, there's definitely programs out there. If and when it becomes a, a problem with any group in the town, we need to bring something specifically back in, say to the school systems, or, you know, like support other, you know, drug and alcohol abuse counselling type programs and stuff to the province, you know, we can certainly do that. But again, you know, we do have working professionals in that field, and we kind of default back to them.
It almost seems to me like they take this in the lock zone as a, as a gamble.
Oh, absolutely.
I can take this stuff and they got in the lock zone, they'll bring me back.
It's a failsafe, yeah. That's, that's what they think, right?
Seems to be what the problem is.
And we do, and we hand those kits out, right? I mean, we'll hand them out, the public health authority will hand them out, hospitals will hand them out, shelters hand them out. We, we have to carry that on our, like as part of our daily equipment, right? We all carry two shots in the lock zone. Right? Like it's just, that's, that's a new working norm.
Counselor Bengey, Counselor Brown?
Sergeant Wright, but two weeks before Christmas, I had a phone call. And then I've had two phone calls this past week. It seems like our people are, are taking a advantage of the, the weather during the nighttime. They're becoming very transient and they're knocking on doors at 2:00 in the morning and asking for food and stuff like that.
Right.
Especially on Second Avenue. What should I be telling these people? Do they dial 911? Or should they dial right in, directly into the office?
No, after hours, call, call 911. That'll get the quickest response. I mean, not that we necessarily, if somebody's, you know, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, I mean, it can be a pretty good assumption at that point, that if you're out wandering around, you're, you're probably not up to, to anything good. So yeah, the safe bet there for a quick response is to call 911 and just get us over to, to assess the situation.
Well, I took it upon myself that, I don't sleep very good at night, so about 11:00 at night, I get in my car and I go out driving and watch, and they are becoming more transient at night because of the weather.
Right.
And, but I'm just wondering if they're looking for a place to, for shelter. You know, that's a concern, because it seems like at, at some point in time, they disappear. Everybody disappears.
Well, I know, like, the shelter itself has very specific rules about, you know, when you go, when you leave, and who can be admitted and stuff. So unless they're, you know, they're, they're missing the lights out, so to speak, and not getting into that shelter for one, one reason or the other, I mean, we can certainly explore that. I would say that the prisoners lodged, I had to go back and look at the numbers, but we're not, we're not lodging a whole lot, like after midnight.
Okay.
I can, I can maybe think of two or three in the last, like two weeks kind of thing, that that came in, you know, after midnight. So, you know, it's likely happening, and it might just be one of those things where we've got to do increased patrols at that hour.
Counselor Brown?
Just a question. So I have been getting phone calls in regards to Seventh Street. So that's by the elementary school that goes out to the golf course, so that road. So it is, it is past the elementary school, so we have the speed limit goes down, and then it comes back up. And we had put a speed, what are they?
Century.
Thank you. We put one of those up, because we were trying to decide if people were speeding through there, or if they were just going the speed limit.
Right.
Because the biggest complaint from the residents that are calling me is, our kids are almost getting hit, people are flying through there. So we did put a crosswalk in, thinking that that would help, because there wasn't a sidewalk for the kids to walk to school on.
Right.
Going down that one side of the street. And so we put the crosswalk in, hoping that that would help. They're telling me it's not, so thanks for that. But I'm just wondering, what more can we do? Like what, on town level, on your level?
So what, what, I guess, my first question would be, what, what feedback were you getting from that speed century? Like when were your, you know, I guess the most speeders recorded, what days and times? Because typically, we can get all that information on the printout from those centuries, and then we just do targeted enforcement at those times, right? Like if that's the issue. Oh.
I'd have to go mining it, I don't know.
Okay.
It's on the wrong side of the road. That side of the road was very bumpy. They'll slow down going that way. It's coming this way that they, they can crank it up.
Yeah, so, so maybe we'll look at putting it back up again. And so you're saying that you'll, you'll look at when people are flying through there by that printout, and then you can have people posted there?
Yeah, you can typically get a pretty good snapshot from those speed centuries of when you're getting, like it'll measure traffic volume and speed and everything else, and it gives you a date and times. And you typically see, you know, like Monday through Friday morning from, you know, whatever, it's going to be 6:00 to 8:00, people going to work, and your, your volume numbers go way up, and so do your, so does your speed, right? So, and the last speed century I worked with, it could also tell, you know, because it shoots back, I don't know if this is the one that shoots back the speed, like it lets you know your speed?
Oh yeah, it does.
Okay, yeah. So you may get a, a lot of residents saying, oh yeah, like every morning, these guys are flying, they're just, you know, cruising along. And you can tell by the numbers, oh, it's, you know, two, two of the 50 vehicles that exceeded the speed limit, or, you know, perhaps it's 40 of the 50 vehicles that exceeded the speed limit, right?
Because the question was, are they speeding, or are they actually just going the speed limit?
Right.
I mean, because if they're just going the speed limit, well, there's nothing we can do about that, right? But if they're speeding through there, then obviously there is something we can do about it.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'm just flagging you to it.
Yeah.
And we'll put the speed century back up, I guess, and we'll get a printout for you. Just, if you could look into that, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. Between, like us and Sean, right? Like that's, that's not a big deal to do some targeted enforcement down there. And if that's not working, right? I mean, there, there's other ways to do it.
Like?
You know, like, like I, again, I always say I'm a big fan of speed bumps, right?
It has.
So, you know, whether or not it works in a place like that, I, I don't know, going out to the golf course, you know, perhaps at the start and, you know, over the crosswalk or something like that, I don't know. But rumble strips, those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Just a quick question. Is the Blood Reserve, are they no longer doing their state lawful emergency? Are the curfews now not in effect anymore?
No, still in effect.
Are the curfews supposed to be in effect still?
Yeah, I know they do regularly en, enforce it on the reserve. You know, I haven't checked with them this week to see if anything's changed, but I, I don't think they were, last I checked, they weren't planning on changing anything until the next round of, like provincial announcements came out.
I guess I wonder, because Counselor Brangley, Brang brought up, there are people out and about, and we know they're not living in town. They're from the reserve, and they shouldn't be in town.
Right.
After a certain time, right? And so maybe those need to be looked at a little more carefully.
Unless they live in town.
Unless they live in town, yeah.
Yeah.
But I've seen them round too, and they're not in town, they're from the reserve.
Right.
They're just not obeying their rules.
Right. Well.
Do you guys have jurisdiction in that case?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
No, we wouldn't, we, we wouldn't enforce something, like it'd essentially be like enforcing a, a blood tribe bylaw.
Yeah.
In the town of Cardston, right? It just, it wouldn't fly.
Thank you very much, Sergeant Wright, and thank you to your detachment for all their work. It's a, a lot of difficult work at this time, I'm sure. It's not really easy with COVID.
It's, and if, Ms. Mayor, if I can just mention one more thing here.
Please.
Just to, to put any type of rumors to rest, over Christmas, there were no charges laid to anyone within the county of Cardston for any type of mass or illegal gatherings, or anything of that nature. The RCMP were not peeping in people's windows to, to count how many uncles and aunts were around the tree Christmas morning, or anything of that nature. So just to, just to put that to bed.
Didn't use your drones?
Just no, no Grinches on the fours, huh?
No, there is not. Not to say that we weren't called, but again, like, you know, the, the line right now is just, you know, education to gain voluntary compliance, and, you know, enforcement really is a, a last measure at this point, right? Because.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that rumor I heard too.
Right. I don't know where these things get started, but.
I dispelled it because I knew the protocol you were using. But you're right, it was something that was flying around.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Well, thank you so much for putting that to rest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so our second delegation will not be there today. So we are going to go to item five, adoption of minutes. That was the minutes of December the 8th. Counselor Drew?
Let's make a motion to adopt the minutes, a regular meeting of council on December the 8th, 2021.
Thank you. Question regarding the content? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so on the sixth byline policy, we had recommendation from CCW. So if you remember, had to do with the Park and Rec Board, Counselor Self, it was your, your motion. Do you want to look at it?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that the Parks and Rec Board have a discussion with the Disc Golf Group and discuss the design of the Disc Golf Course, whether it really will interfere with the paths that are in, along Ali Creek.
Okay, thank you. I'm just wondering, Jeff, if the letters that we received could be useful to that group? Maybe if you could pass them along. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
And I'd like to make a motion to invite the Old Man Watershed Council to a future council meeting.
Okay, that's fine. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so those recommendations are made. They're not, not mentioned motions. On the 6B, Counselor Barnes, do you want to talk about the fees and charge? Was that the rec and, the rec board that kind of recommended them? And I would imagine you feel comfortable with them?
Yep, the Parks and Rec Board looked over everything. They compared our fee guide to other, to Raymond McGrath, Sterling, other areas, same size as us. And there wasn't a very large, as you can see if you guys reviewed it, $5, $3. It was very minimal.
Right.
Is what we brought things up to.
The, the only rate that I saw was quite large changes, was with a team from 140 to 200 per year.
Correct.
But that's for a team, meaning that it could be 10 or 15 people there.
Sorry, if I can. And the reason was, was because we were so much under.
Yeah.
Other places, and Lethbridge is coming out to use our facilities. And so we needed to get a better, we just needed to bring it up to where, we're still way below Lethbridge, but.
Yeah. All right, so I looked at them and I felt quite comfortable with the changes. Comfort, Counselor Bengey, do you have a question regarding those?
Last, last summer, I had a question, a phone call, and it was from a large family, eight children. And it was concerning the swimming pool charges. And if you look at underneath the definition of family is two parents and up to four immediate children, do we need to look at that seriously? Because we have some large families in our, in our community, you know?
Counselor Brown?
Um, so what I can tell you, Counselor, is I too have heard it occasionally. Every year I've been on council, I've had at least one family bring it up. What I can say is, the norm though, is that we do have the odd person, but the norm is that they're fine with it, and it's not a big deal. And they are making it work.
Okay.
That's what I can tell you.
So it's $30 above per child?
Correct.
Okay.
But still under, under, is it three, they're free, right?
Okay.
So. Because truthfully, if you think about it, sorry, Mayor, if I can.
Go ahead.
If you think about it, if you have a large family, odds that you're going to have all six of them at the pool at the same time are rare, because your older kids aren't going with the younger kids, and your younger kids, I mean, your middle, they're going, and odds are good there's four of them. That's kind of how we looked at it.
Right.
Is that, I'm not taking K through 12 to the pool, it's just not happening. If it is, I'm renting the pool, because it's dirt cheap.
Right.
So.
That's true.
Anyway, that's what I can answer.
All right.
Thank you.
So that is the new fee schedule. It is something that administration has in their books now, and we don't need any approval of them.
Mayor, you do.
Do you want, also, sorry about that. Okay, Counselor?
I'll make a motion to accept the new fees and, what are they called?
Charges.
Fees and charges policy, F-20-8 for 2021.
Yeah, I should have looked at word policy. Okay. I would have said something. All in favor? Thank you. All right, the next item is going to take us a little bit of time, is the budget. And we're going to turn it to Jeff, as you have.
Can you blank the screen for a minute, Sean?
Some new information for us?
JD's just handing out something for me that I'll reference here in a second.
Thank you.
And it's actually a summary of a summary you got in December, but I'll explain that a little further. Okay, a couple of things on budget. Last meeting at CCW, I gave you a eight, or 11 by 17. I have it, I can bring up on the screen to reference here, as well as we discussed. And that scenario, that January scenario was a balanced budget, but it did not contain the operational or capital cost of the rec facility. And, and there's a couple of reasons why we went down that road. It wasn't to close the door on the discussion at all, but it was to try and help get this thing into balance. Now, since CCW, a couple of things of significance have happened that I want to talk about with relation to trying to budget for the rec facility without us in the short term, meaning that we have some things to work through that aren't going to be quick to work through on the rec facility. One, as you saw in your package, was the response from the school division. And they aren't interested in being a capital or operational partner in the facility. So a, a good chunk of the revenue that we had initially in the budget was coming from the school board as a major tenant partner. And so we're going to have to really review where those revenues can come from and how that might look going forward. And I haven't had a chance to, to do that yet. We haven't done that. The second part I wanted to talk about just was something that, that came to me here about three hours ago, three, four hours ago from AUMA. So Rachel DeVoss from AUMA phoned me. And Sean, if you can turn the screen on, I'll pull this up for reference. I had sent her an email a while ago. On December, oh, I think 3rd, I might be wrong, there was a, a webinar that, that AUMA hosted, Counselor Bengey was, was on it, and I was on it. And they were sending out some interesting messages, things I wasn't quite getting my head around too well. And I was trying to get clarity. And what I was trying to get from them was, I wanted to get a copy of the meeting so that I could show you all. Because I felt like they were asking us to read between a whole bunch of lines, but they weren't really coming out with anything. So I'd called Rachel last, what is it, Tuesday? So I guess last week, I called Rachel and said, Rachel, can I finally get a copy of this presentation? And she called me back yesterday and said, no, we've decided we're not giving it out for public consumption, but we'll, because in the meeting, you might remember, Counselor, there was a lot of municipalities who were pretty specific about some of their financial challenges and strategies, and they didn't really feel that they wanted that out there for their municipalities or their residents to, to take.
They didn't really open up on it either.
Yeah, so they wanted to be cautious. So, so I said, well, okay, fine. I just, I said, I'm trying to understand when Barry would say things like, we're worried about your, your, your next year's funding maybe not coming at all. What the heck does that mean? How do I interpret that? Am I interpreting the province's fiscal year 2020, or 21, 22? Is that my fiscal year 21? I said, there was just a lot of weird things said. So she phoned me back today and she said, okay, we've had some discussion, and we're probably going to put out some messaging on this. Because I told her I was a little, it wasn't exactly clear on our MSI allocations and then the transfer to local government fiscal framework and, and how that was looking. We all know local government fiscal framework is going to be reduced MSI, and we've planned for that in the budget. We planned for that early on. That was no problem. But they kept talking about this, this concern about MSI. So what you have on the screen up there is, we get these from the province as soon as they think they can tell us, I'll scroll down here, but across the top, I want to show it's MSI capital, a gas tax component, and then subtotal of capital, then operating, and then total funding. Okay, so that's what they, they look at there. And then it goes by cities and then towns. So if I go down to, I'll put us at the bottom, just so it's easy to see. Cardston, we have 524 of MSI, 234 gas tax, for a total of 758.7, plus 218 operational, for a total of just under a million, 976. And that is what, and I'm going to scroll back up to the top again, this came out some time ago, and the big key word here is that's a 2021 MSI allocation estimate, and then they usually confirm it a little later on. So frankly, I, you know, it, it's normally what we get. So what Rachel said today is, they are quite concerned that the 2021 MSI allocation is going to be significantly reduced. Our fiscal 2021.
By how much, Sean?
And I said, well.
I don't know.
Well, there, there, I'll, I'll get to that. But I said, how are we supposed to do a budget if we have to wait for the provincial budget to come out before we know what the MSI is? Because provincial budget's the end of April. Now, that's right before we do mill rate, but you like to have a budget in place before May of your year. And she said, yeah, that's a real challenge. And she said, the province has not said it's going to be reduced. But she said, what we're hearing and reading between the lines and the letter you got from municipal affairs and those kind of things is, that you should plan on a 10% to 20% reduction in that amount in 2021. So again, I just found this out.
In 2021. In twenty twenty-one.
In this fiscal year. And she said, but you won't know that until the provincial budget comes down. And they hope to be wrong. She hopes she's wrong and so do I. But they are, they are starting to advise municipalities to plan on reducing your MSI by up to twenty percent in this fiscal.
In other words, to reserve at least that much money, not spending it.
Well, she, she was saying, yeah, you may not want to spend all of your, you may not want to spend nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of MSI because you may end up with almost a hundred and, what would that be? Hundred and eighty-something thousand less than that.
But Jeff, the, the, uh, what I got out of that was don't spend money from all of the municipalities that answered, you know, phoned in. And, uh, Coldale, or when they responded in Coldale, uh, one other respondent, uh, sort of stuck their neck out and told Coldale they're crazy what they're doing.
Yeah. But, but, but let me bring it to today and, and this budget and how we navigate it, right? Because here's the challenge. We have an interim operating budget which allows us to, in fact, I was signing checks today and it's our AUMA memberships and it's this membership and that, that thing, all that stuff. So that's good. We're paying the bills and we're moving forward and that works fine. The challenge is, is if you post, if we collectively, but if you as a council postpone the approval of the capital budget until mill rate time, we can't make any capital purchases until May.
That's right.
And we have a challenge, for example, we've got two hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars for the campground expansion, all MSI funded, by the way. As an aside, but we'll talk about that in a second. That the guys would actually like to have that completed before May long weekend. Um, and Brandon's saying, I'm not really comfortable ordering the materials, just, well, he can't. I mean, that's the rule now. He can't order the materials because it's in capital. And so I, I, I went through, you know, I was just looking through and saying, you know, what are the things we could hold off on? What are the things that, well, we can hold off on everything, let's be honest. But what, what is more reasonable and, you know, we have five or six things that if we can't do anything until May, it's a bit problematic. So for example, Brandon right now is working on, uh, all of our inventories for audit and reconciling all of our capital projects from last year for the audit. But once that's done, he puts everything out to tender. So all of our pipe, any equipment we're purchasing, metals, anything like that over the thresholds, it all goes out to tender. And he, you know, he asked me today, he said, I don't, I don't know if I should be putting anything out in February, for example, because prices will change by May. You know, I can't, I can't pull the trigger on a check and no one's going to hold quotes that long. That's one thing. And the other thing we found is, and I don't think we'll have that issue this year, I hope. Any equipment we ordered last year, it took six months from the time of order to get it. So then we don't have the use of it for the construction season, right? We lose that. Now, I still think we can deal with that. So what I, when I looked at the budget and saying, how do we, how do we do two things? One, we move forward with a, with a level of comfort that we can do some capital expenditures that need to be done in the first quarter or would be ideal in the first quarter. And two, how do we, how do we mitigate the unknown in capital funding and operational funding to a degree? We have two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in operational MSI. Could be potentially forty-three, forty-four, forty-five thousand dollars less than that. That's, uh, almost two percent of taxes, about percent and a half, a little over percent and a half. So how do we mitigate all that? And I'm not trying to use the rec facility as the sacrificial lamb here. What I'm, what I, what we've done in the budget is if it is out, and we need to have some talk tonight about uh, your, your comfort with utility and, and taxation rates for the, for this upcoming year as well. If it's out, we would not assign that capital money to anything else. We would leave the seven hundred thousand dollars in reserves and the three hundred thousand dollars in expected MSI. Let's put it that way. And then in April, we would know more because we have a couple of things. I'm not comfortable giving you any kind of operational budget right now. And I'm, and we don't have the information back from Hasegawa on the capital either. Now, that's coming soon. You talked to Brandon a couple of days ago, but I, we don't have it yet. And so those are just some pieces that may take a while to work through. And in the process, we can't pass a capital budget, which presents some administrative challenges if we get into March and April and, and further down. So what I have tonight is that we haven't changed this that you got last week. We haven't changed that at all. So this was a two percent tax increase, a two point eight percent utility rate increase, without the recreation facility operationally or capital in there. But again, not using, so even operationally, we took the operational money for the rec facility and put it in major utility capital reserves. So it's still there. But those numbers are so big and so fluid still, they're really awkward numbers to, to make work in the budget.
Jeff, can you repeat that? We got a two percent?
That is here, that is here.
So that little summary sheet I gave you, Kim, so that's what I wanted to do that for. You saw an expanded version of this a little while ago. This budget is built on two percent a year, which leads to six point one at the end of the three. And then the utility rate was between seven and six point six, I believe, over the three years. And so that's what we've, we've built it on to balance it over the three years, is those kind of increases. And my feeling was, there was, this was never specifically iterated at the meeting, but my feeling was that maybe you weren't collectively super comfortable with that, given the current political and economic climate. That, that, that you might be a little uncomfortable with that. I don't know. So what we, what I have, if you wish to look at it, is we have in twenty twenty-one, a two, a one and a zero percent tax increase with utilities staying the same. Uh, if you wish to look at that, um, we can have a look at that tonight and how that looks. Uh, but I would like to see if there's a way that as a group, you can be collectively comfortable that we could work towards passing a budget, including the capital. Now, I would exercise a little restraint on my end too, wherein the, the rec facility doesn't have to be the whole, uh, what's the word? The insurance for reduced MSI. Now, that's three hundred grand of it. But for example, I would probably tell Public Works, you've got two pieces of equipment in there. Well, one that's MSI funded, one's reserve funded. But the MSI funded one, we're not going to purchase until after mill rate, for example. We'll just wait on that. Because that, it, it's a significant piece and it's fully MSI funded. So that's a piece we would hold off on. It's not critical, uh, to, it's, from a time perspective, it's not critical. So maybe that's something, you know, we would also wait on that's MSI funded, just to see. So I'd, I'd exercise some internal discretion on MSI spending as well. So that's, I mean, I'll, I'd be happy to take some questions about where you feel this should go. But I am, I'm very concerned to wait until we know the answer to these questions to pass a capital budget. I think that will be detrimental to us.
Okay, so Jeff, there is two issues that I can see. One is regarding if there's an appetite around the table to pass the budget as you're talking about, but right now it's based on two percent increase.
Correct, the one you received last week.
With the increase on the utilities.
Yes.
Which over three years represent a fair chunk of increase really between utilities and taxes is definitely very significant. So that is one. The second one is to find out if council wants to see the, uh, tax increase table. I mean, what you prepared, the one percent, the zero percent, and see what it looks like. So, uh, first of all, maybe let's start with the first question. How many of you would be prepared to pass a budget tonight that allow the different department to get busy in their field? Counselor Bangry?
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
Can I just ask a question?
Please, go ahead.
Is this because we have an interim budget? Yeah, so right now you, we do not have an approved capital budget.
Right.
And if, and if it looked like we had all our numbers, that we're really comfortable that next meeting, we could pass everything? I'd say, well, that, that's great. But I'm not comfortable that we're ready to do that because we might be waiting till the provincial budget to find out almost two hundred thousand dollars worth of, of, of revenues. And so I think if, I think that we can exercise some discretion in the capital budget by, by delaying at least, well, so the rec facility, for example, does free up three hundred grand in MSI. If we don't get that MSI, but we can also, for example, the, the backhoe, I can just say, we're not buying that until after provincial budget and after mill rate because that's also fully MSI funded. And that would cover the loss of the MSI as well. So we just have to look at how to manage it. I just am worried about waiting a full quarter before we even go to tender on a lot of things. I think it'd be problematic. So the, the campground, for instance, if we were to, to get that done before May, then that's going to bring in some income. Well, you would hope, yeah, yeah. All right.
Okay, so would you support that? Okay, Counselor Brown, you would support that? Counselor Brown? Counselor, go ahead.
What I'm struggling with though is that I'm struggling with having taxes go up in three years, six point one percent. When I look around and I'm seeing so many families that are struggling due to COVID. Not that they're getting it, but they've been laid off.
Yeah.
And so I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with that.
Okay, so that will come to the second point, Counselor Brown. Where, uh, that is maybe then worthwhile for us to look at what the budget would look like with a reduced taxation rate. Are, were you okay with looking at that? So it seems to me the first thing, you will have an approved budget today. The second one, we need to have a look at what the different numbers look like and figure look like. So go ahead.
I don't know if you, you still have a couple of councils you want?
Counselor, Counselor Coe, I saw you bobbing your head, I imagine. Counselor Silk, uh, that's what I kind of saw, I saw the bobbing. So, uh, and Counselor Bangry, I would imagine, yeah?
I could, just in response to Counselor Brown's concerns, and I have them too. We're getting a lot of download from the province that we have to cover as well. And I can't see how we can keep the budget too much leaner with all this stuff that we're going to have to start paying for with the province downloading on us.
That is.
Schools and everything else.
That is an everlasting issue for the past, how many years that I've been on council?
So why didn't MLA scout come tonight?
Actually, if you, well, he had a, a personal issue he didn't want public just yet, but I'll explain it to you in the closed session. Yeah. He just called, he called me just before the meeting with his sincerest apologies and I'll, I'll explain it here shortly. But I, we're hoping to have him in two weeks, counselor. Um, so the budget you got last week, um, uh, generated two point eight zero one million dollars in tax revenue. So that means for you, every percent is about twenty-eight thousand dollars, right? If that's what we're looking at. So to mitigate a full two percent tax increase decreases taxation by roughly fifty-six thousand dollars. So when we look at how do we fund it? How do we just make taxes go away and still balance the budget? Well, work with me to follow the trail of the money for a second. So when we balance this budget we gave you December eighth, it was without the operational expenses of the rec facility. So that, all those expenses, we put into major utility capital reserves. It was a place to park them without using them, right? Because I told you, we were going to try not to bite into those too much. So this budget, uh, Shem, I went dark here for a sec. Can you go back up with it? And let me, sorry, this, first of all, I'll have to scroll a bit, but this is what you saw last week, two point eight million dollars. I'll, two point eight million in real property taxes. And then, don't mind, don't get dizzy from the incessant scrolling here. And we got to go, so, and then what that also did is it put a hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in major utility capital reserves. Based one on the rec center and also some other little things we maneuvered around to try and do what we could there. Now, you can take the, if you want to reduce taxes by twenty-eight thousand dollars per percent, that can come from any of the line items in this budget. I'm not debating that at all. But we can use this account to, to balance that. So if we want to go down to one percent, we take twenty-eight thousand dollars out of that hundred and twenty-three thousand. And that would reduce the demand for taxes by a percent.
Okay, uh, can, can you show me exactly where you are because I'm lost here?
Yeah, sorry. I am at the very end of operational cost and transfers to reserves. Major utility capital reserves.
Okay, all right, fine.
And, and the hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five is the twenty-one budget, right?
Correct, that's, yes, sorry, I know it doesn't all fit well, it just gets so small. Yeah, the purple is twenty-twenty, that was last year.
That's one twenty-three, eight twenty-five.
The gray is one twenty-three, yes, is what we have in there now. So bear with me, that's page fifteen, bear with me for one second.
So if I hear you, you're saying that if we were to reduce by one percent, about twenty-seven thousand dollars?
Correct, so this is a one percent model where your revenue instead of two point eight oh one would be two point seven seven three. And what that does is it's only two transactions, is that number there now goes down to ninety-six, four twenty-five. And that's how we would fund the reduced taxation. Or, and again, there's a million ways to do it, that's, that's the one way we would look at it.
Okay, so how does that impact then the utilities?
So it doesn't. The utilities, we haven't touched.
So what is here is what remains here?
Correct, and that's partly because you have a bylaw on the utilities. Now, you have full discretion to change the bylaw, but there was a bylaw that sets those rates and that's according to that. This fall, you, that bylaw expires in twenty twenty-one. So this, before the election, you'll be reviewing all of the utility costs and rates again. We'll look again at the contribution of utilities to taxation like we did on the eighth, or was it in CCW recently? Let's say that, that's safe. And, um, and we'll set the new three years of utility rates by bylaw this summer.
All right, so if we carry on with this reasoning, if you were to do zero percent increase in taxes.
Yeah.
Then we would have about sixty-seven or something like that left in reserve.
Yeah, correct. Now, remember though, here's the trade-off. Is there is nothing in the operations to fund the rec facility.
Right.
So that's the trade-off, is that's where that cash came from. So to, to run it down to zero now, there's a big, there's a big caveat here too, that if the facility doesn't actually open this calendar year, then we're okay. We don't need to allocate that much operational cost to it. You know, maybe it doesn't get in the ground until summer or something, right? And so it doesn't, we don't allocate a cost, much cost to it outside of capital until January. I don't know that. So there's a chance that works out okay.
All right, so essentially we need to know as a council, if we want to remain at two percent or as Counselor Brown was saying, maybe we need to do better, one percent or zero percent? That was the choice in Lethbridge for two years. Uh, Counselor Coe, Counselor Barnes?
Do we have a, an average of, but if we were left to two percent, what the increase in tax would be for the average household?
Um, so you're only talking, I need to grab my average.
About fifty dollars.
I, I could get you a much more exact number, you're close.
Yeah.
Um, if you took an average assessment of around, I want to say twenty-four hundred dollars, I think, twenty-two hundred? So forty-four bucks, something like that on the average.
At a two percent.
Yes, correct.
And my second part of this is we've watched other jurisdictions that keep their taxes low, 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 low. Then all of a sudden they get nailed between the eyes with an eight or nine percent increase. I do not want to see that happen. If we continue to keep it lower than what we can recover and we're using reserves to, to cover everything up, then, then we're going to be in trouble down the road. So I'd hate to see us lower it this year and then have, five years down the road, have to jack it up.
No, yeah, you have a point, counselor. That is a definite point. Yes, Counselor Brown.
And you have Counselor Barnes, Mary.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Barnes got to go on.
We had this discussion about four years ago on the last council about holding the tax increase. And at that time, I had some reservations about, uh, holding the line, but I went with everybody. And recently I had a discussion with a taxpayer here in town. He brought it up. He said, so what is your tax going to be increased this year? And I said, well, we haven't made that decision yet. He says, I'm really concerned that if we don't increase taxes a couple of percent. He said, the inflationary factor is going to hit you and you're going to, hold on, just let me finish one thing.
No, 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 I, I hear you, I'm just in process.
And he said, there's going to come a time when you're going to need to buy equipment or whatever it is, capital expenses. If you don't raise those taxes a little bit, you're not going to be able to get them. And those things eventually are going to wear out. And then all of a sudden, you're going to have to start borrowing. He says, I don't want to see the town borrowing money. He says, I don't want to see the town borrowing money to do these things. And we've been fortunate, so far, we haven't had to. And so I'm concerned a little bit about the inflationary thing, and I I think 2% is fine.
Okay, so here.
That's my percent, that's my feeling.
Here is something that, Jeff, you might correct me, but every time you establish a budget, you have the inflationary factor inside that budget. Am I correct?
So on most of our reoccurring accounts, your utilities, labor, yes, we factor in inflation on all these things.
So it's factored in.
But what what happens, so so two things, I I know you had another counselor that wanted to speak, and I don't want to interrupt that.
Go ahead.
Well, one of the things, Counselor, over your last couple of terms, is by and large, you've held the tax rate pretty static. It hasn't moved much, but you've taxed differently. And what I mean by that is you've taxed through utilities.
Yes.
And our utility rate increases have been aggressive over the last few years. I mean, if you saw, including electrical, we're subsidizing the operations, and that's okay, but we're subsidizing the operations of the organization by almost $1 million across our utilities, including electrical. And and that's okay. I mean, if they're not contributing, why, if the electrical, for example, isn't contributing, why have it? Right? So so that's fine, but you've taxed a little differently.
Yeah. Well, I'm saying, so there still is an increase, no matter how you look at it, you slice it one way or the other, you're still increasing the taxes, but there's going to be a time where you get it, I mean, the people are starting to grumble about the utility increases that we've had. So, and we haven't had a lot of tax increases.
Nope.
And that's kind of a conversation I've had with a few people, and I'm thinking, yeah, I look at my utility bill, and I look at it compared to five or six years ago, and it does concern me the way that it's going up. I look at my water uses, I'm hardly using any. My water bill's 50-some-odd dollars. I'm like, whoa, what, I haven't even, not even hardly using it? So, you know, if I have to pay an extra 40 bucks on my property taxes, I'd rather go that way.
But it won't change your your utilities.
Pardon me?
It won't change your utilities at this time.
Oh, I know it won't, but I'm still saying, I think we need to go a little bit more. But, I mean, people won't like me for that, but what's, that's $40. Or did you say $48?
But roughly for the, if you're, if you're, yeah, depending on your assessment, but yes, roughly.
Okay. So Counselor Brown, Counselor Bangu.
You pretty much answered my question, so I think I'm good.
Okay. All right. Fine. Counselor Bangu.
Jeff, where have our requisitions come in at? About 2%?
Well, we don't know on the education yet, but we flow that through, right? So the only, I can think of one time in, in, I think, I don't think it was you, I think it was a previous council where it came in really high. Like, it was a huge increase, and you decided to actually reduce municipal portion to buffer that.
Right.
So that that was a tough one, right? Because it was so high that first year of the NDP.
Percent increase.
So we don't know that one yet. We have most of the rest. Our fire was a little bit.
Less.
Oh, yeah, a little bit less by a few thousand. I think library was status quo, if I'm recalling.
But next year, they want to talk.
So I think we've been fairly okay there, frankly. Solid Waste Authority was a little bit up, we knew that, but we can flow that through through the utility rate. Again, there's utility taxation. So we we use the utility to raise that money, which I think is appropriate, by the way.
Okay. So maybe I'd like to hear from all of you to try to figure out, because that's what we need to determine, is that 2% or is that 1%? So Counselor Brown, if I hear you, you'd rather leave it at 2%?
That's my feeling.
Counselor Drew, what's your feeling on this one? You're a businessman.
So the major reserve that has, the money that's gone in there is ear-tagged for the rec center.
So that's where we, when we remove that expense, that's where we put it? Yes.
And so what I read through here is that the Westwind School Division doesn't want to play.
That's right.
Have we heard anything from the county?
Not officially, let's put it that way.
I mean, unofficially, maybe not favorable.
I wouldn't say that.
No.
Well.
I would say they're waiting for us to make a move.
I, I think.
Maybe beyond that.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with 1%. I'd like to take the money out of this if if the if the center isn't coming on board on 2021. 1% is okay with me.
I should mention as well, you have another kick at this. You're not setting your mill rate tonight?
No.
Right? So when we know more from the province, if our MSI operating, for example, doesn't change, that's a good thing. Now, if it changes, we're having a more difficult discussion. If it goes down 20%, we're having a tremendously more difficult discussion. But I don't want you to think that it's a so let it be written, so let it be done tonight because you still have to establish mill rate. We don't have our full assessment reports in yet, for example. So that's the other thing, Counselor Barnes, you've you've taxed differently largely through utilities, but we've also been the recipient of increased assessment across the municipality, right? So we will see how that plays out when that assessment report comes in. There's still some variables between now and mill rate time, but but it's important for us to have some consensus before I start spending considerable dollars, that I know I'm within a pretty close range here.
Okay. So Counselor Salk, would you rather have 2, 1, 0?
I'd rather go at 2%.
Okay.
Historically, we've always left our increases up to the assessment report. Am I correct, Jeff? It's been pretty flat.
Yeah, I don't know if always is, if it's that definitive, but it sure played a big role.
Right.
Yeah.
But we haven't had difficult conversations around this council table with raising taxes by anything.
Because of decreased assessment, you haven't.
Right.
Yeah.
So we've never done it in three years.
Decreased, you're saying?
Yeah.
Uh, no, the last time I remember reducing the mill rate was when the school requisition came in at like 6% or something.
It was the former, the former.
Yeah, but I don't recall it with this group, no.
Council.
I I could be wrong, I just don't recall it.
But it was, it was an outrageous increase. It was over 6%. It was so much, too much.
I tend to think that, as Counselor Barnes said, we're going to head down a path where eventually the taxpayers are going to be hit with a substantial increase, and that's not going to play as well as a 2% increase, which, as we said, it's about 50 bucks on the average, 40 to 50 bucks on the average property.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a little easier to stomach.
Counselor Coates, what's your feeling, 2%? Counselor Brown?
Hmm.
I mean, I know you're concerned, so it's between 1 and 2, I would imagine, or 0?
No, I mean, it's definitely between 1 and 2. I understand, I I understand both sides of it. I understand it's only $50-ish.
But for a family, it means a lot.
Right? I just, or seniors, or I just.
Yeah.
I.
Would that be fair to say you would prefer 1% at this time? Anyway, anywhere between 1 and 2, somewhere, somewhere there.
That's what I would say.
Yeah.
I would, don't you think? I I mean.
Somewhere down there.
Two with the maximum, absolutely.
Too, too high, somewhere down there.
Correct. That's where I'm at.
Counselor Bangu, what's your feeling?
Couple of questions. Jeff, you don't have all of the costs of building a rec center from Hessegawa, right?
No, no, we're still not, not 100%. And even once we get those, that, again, that's not, what's the word? That's not the gospel truth on exactly what it'll be either, right? It's another piece of guidance for us. But I'm hoping in the next couple of days, we have those.
Okay. The second one, are you comfortable with the budget you presented with the last meeting, CCW? This one here.
That was based on 2%.
Yeah, that's a 2% budget, and so what I would say to that is, whether it's 0, 1, or 2%, that's your baby. That's a political thing now. More is better for me administratively, but I 100% understand the political implications of it, too. Like, I would not be pushing back on that at all. But I need you to understand that if you go with less than 2 in this budget, that money we deferred from the rec operating is now being used in other ways. It's not there to put back.
Prefer to make a motion.
So it's it's not there.
What do you want? Do you want 1% or 2%?
I want 2%.
You want 2%? Okay, well, 2% it is done.
So before anyone makes a motion.
I'm prepared to do that, Jeff. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm trying to think if we want to do the official, you know, I think we might leave that.
Well, you know something? Do you have an official thing for the budget, Counselor?
You bet.
Okay, he has something there.
Okay, I do have the official wording, if you want to do that.
Okay. I make a motion that the 2021 operating and capital budgets be adopted as presented, and that the 2022, or 2022 and 2023 operating and 2022 to 2025 capital budgets be approved as presented in principle.
Shem, can you just make sure the minutes say that council discussed the 2% tax increase budget, just so that's clear in the minutes? That that's the one that was presented?
Okay. So thank you, Counselor, for all that discussion. It's always tough to agree on increases, but honestly, sometime we got to look at it and.
And and again, you have, when there's more things known, you have the.
How it's going to affect us when we get the.
Have the mill rate budget to look at this again.
The mill rate, because we we really is shooting a little bit in the dark right now. So all in favor? Thank you so much, Counselors. I very much appreciate that discussion. It's, it's been really an important discussion.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Jeff, does this open your departments up?
Yes, it does.
That they can start doing work?
With caution, Counselor. So we will do what's necessary until after the mill rate, and the provincial budget comes down.
Right.
So like I said, we have a couple of MSI-funded pieces of equipment. Chances are, we will not, won't proceed on those until after the mill rate budget, in case we have to really adjust at 20%.
But we could proceed on the campground and the.
The campground, electrical, a few of those things that they're looking to to tender some, some products, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Drew, please go ahead.
So just, let's just talk, let's say our numbers for the rec center come in at $5 million.
Okay.
And it's, we decide it's not a go. That money that we put aside can go back in and.
Yeah, so again, it's made of two, two main things, MSI and reserves. 700,000 reserves, 300,000 MSI. So if a decision's made by mill rate time on that, depending on the numbers that come back, then, yeah, we'll we'll manipulate it at the time. But yes, we will not reallocate that funding until after that whole discussion's had, certainly.
So thank you so much for that question, Counselor. All right, let's go with the draft bylaw 1696. It's an animal bylaw, has been revisited, as you could see, there's a few changes that make the language easier to understand, really. And I think you have a question, Counselor?
No, I was just gonna.
First reading.
We move first reading of draft bylaw 1696.
Okay.
To thank JD for all of his time studying the birds and the bees.
Yeah. JD, you're going to be so, so well-trained, man alive, you will leave us.
I'll nail topics specifically.
I'm sure he's fine.
Literally, literally birds and bees and.
They'll be lining up.
And dogs and cats.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Move second reading.
You know, we don't, we don't need to, it can stay there.
I do think there, I think you are having someone that would like to come speak to at next meeting, so you may just want to hold and get some public feedback on it.
Yeah, I think let's leave it this way.
We're not in a panic on it, so it's okay.
No, it's no need. Since it involves a public, it's always best to wait. All right, let's go to other business. So in the rec facility, Jeff, you were going to give us some upgrade, but at this time, we have the Westwind Division letter, that's what we have.
Yeah, I got that yesterday.
As for the rest, we have nothing else?
Just that, and and it's really a bit the same. I talked to Brandon this morning, lined yesterday and this morning. So Mark Kassegawa has, they're just trying to tidy up a couple of things on the pricing. Mark is looking to see if whether they should try and reduce some square footage to try and get some pricing in line, but he's working on a few other things. We actually haven't talked to him too much. He seems to just be going through it a bit, but he sent us some questions on the common areas and control, like, set areas, and just a few little things operationally like that. He still doesn't have enough square footage for the required washrooms at 150 seat, 150-person capacity, which is where he's aiming to put the washroom capacity. But so he's just working on a few little pieces, and then we should have a new preliminary design. It's not much different, except for just meeting some code things and cost here, I would hope in the next few days. I would think certainly by the next council meeting.
All right. Counselor Salk, Counselor Coates, Counselor Bangu.
So Jeff, just a question. How quickly can we move forward on the questionnaire? That's really sort of a hinge point.
Sure, sure. So, and I apologize, just a short turnaround from the last meeting. I'll, we will work to have you a roster of questions for the next meeting to put together. So I guess I've said that publicly in the public meeting now, so JD, you got to have a list of questions for Council by the next meeting.
JD, it's your feet that are being held.
Yeah. We will work to have a good roster of questions for the next meeting.
And just another.
That was my question as well.
That was your question?
Just a follow-up, if I might.
Please, go ahead.
With respect to the Westwind School Division letter, is it possible that myself or whomever could share that with the Pickleball Association so they understand about the funding implications moving forward?
So I would suggest after today, it's public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a public.
So they can have it so they understand what the implications are with respect to their fundraising efforts?
I I grappled with it a bit if I put, called it a intergovernmental relations closed session item, and I thought, you know what? We're not, we're not disclosing anything that that is is going to harm anyone's privacy individually, so I would consider it public.
Jeff, in that letter, there is something that intrigued me. This is a.
What can intrigue you in two paragraphs, ma'am?
Okay, let me see that. What intrigued me is the following. Unfortunately, Westwind School Division has other capital priorities that does not allow, et cetera. Is there a word "other"? Is other, could we say, is there a project that you were talking about, Counselor Brown, in two or three years back when you talked about the Lions Park upgrade? in two or three years back, when you talked about the Lions Park upgrade? Would that be part of the other capital?
No idea.
Is that something that they would be interested in?
So...
I don't know.
I mean, I'm just throwing that to try to figure out, if this project is not of interest to them, is there another one that might be of interest? Which the only one would be the Lions Park, because that's the one we always kind of talked about.
So, to answer that, so, sorry, I would love to answer that, but everything is just hearsay. So, there's lots of hearsay going on, but what I can tell you is, and Jeff can back me up on this, I hope, is that when we met with them, they were not hoping to spend money on us in any shape or form.
Okay.
Is what I can tell you.
Okay.
Because when we did our Westwind School Division joint use agreement, we talked that we would meet yearly, was it?
Every September, yeah.
Every September, that we would sit down with them and that we would try and discuss an upcoming expenditure. But was, has there been one on the books that we're looking at doing? No.
Okay.
So, I don't know what that other...
But I just was curious about the word "other", because if it's "other", are we part of that "other"?
No idea. Would love it.
Jeff, are we still inviting representatives from the school division to come and speak to the council on those kind of things?
That's what they were going to tell us.
So, if you would like to, when, so what I got is, I got an email from Peter saying, hey, yeah, in fact, I wasn't sure, he says, hey, I understand that you have passed an interim budget and you might be, you have some time now in the discussion on the rec center. And I said, oh, in fact, we did pass an interim budget. And he said, well, my board has a position on this, do you want a letter? And I said, well, yeah, sure. And he said, do you want it addressed to you or to council? And I said, well, it was my councillors who presented, so address it back to council. I said, I haven't been there, I haven't been involved in it, right? And so, that's what we have now, at your invitation, I'm quite certain, is the chair, Mr. Ralph, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
That Mr. Ralph would probably come and speak to some of that context.
Would love it.
But I think right now, they were leaving it to, to the letter, but I can certainly invite otherwise.
Hundred percent.
Okay, so, do we want to instruct?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so, put me a motion forward to invite a councillor Coop.
Let me make a motion to invite the chair or a representative of the Westwind School Division trustees to come and discuss things with our council. That's a good way of putting it.
Regarding capital projects?
Yeah.
Considering for capital projects, sir.
Yep.
Right. Okay, so, councillor Self, are you in favor? All right, thank you.
That word.
Just a question if I might.
Please, go ahead, councillor.
I know you're talking about other capital priorities is an interesting point for you.
Yeah.
And the point I find interesting is that they've also determined that their curricular spaces is sufficient, and they would not be prepared to pay any user fees.
Yeah.
So, I mean, their green space is sufficient, that they can use the front lawn at the high school, and they don't need to use ours anymore. The football field.
Interesting.
Well, you know, all that would be good questions.
Their curricular space is sufficient, so I'd suggest that they practice football on the front lawn, they play football on the front lawn, and maybe play baseball there on the front lawn, too.
Okay. So, we have an agreement signed with them, so that is a question when we get our invitee.
I was just gonna say, Jeff, how long is our agreement with the Westwind for the Lions Park?
Oh, what did we do? I'm trying to think, we just signed it.
Is that three or five years?
Five years?
But it could be, but there was that clause in there.
There's a determination for both parties, yeah.
Yeah, there was a clause in there that said, pending so many, so many days, we could back out.
Then, in consideration of that, would it be wise for us to carry on that, with that contract because of the maintenance area? You know, I think they are in agreement that they were gonna do some of the maintenance down there.
We're maintaining the facility for a fee.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
It's quite laid out in the contract fairly, fairly clearly.
We about quadrupled their financial contribution, not to say that the initial amount was very much, but I'm just saying that, so I can make it as a percentage sound awesome, but we...
One dollar to...
It is, in a percentage point of view, it's considerably higher than what it was, and the rates per hour for use of the other facilities are up considerably as well.
Okay, councillor Self, go ahead.
Three times not much is not much, more than not.
That's why I say, I'm not defending the starting number, I'm just saying, as a percentage.
And the agreement has a notice clause in there, where we can notify them at any time that this thing can be amended.
Right. Well, let's have that person come to the board first, and then let's see how we deal with it all. All right, thank you for your discussion and input. Seven B, the golf course, the golf clubhouse.
Yeah, just really quick, I put that on there kind of after the last meeting. The update on that is, and we'll talk a little bit more in closed session with the, with the committee structure. But Brandon is, is working with Brent Coon, who's done the conceptuals you see there. They're not in a format that we can go much further with them, but he's, he's trying to work with Brent, he told me this today, to see how far they can take the design between them, and then we'll have to engage some third parties. So, for example, on that site, we want a geotechnical evaluation of the hill and the footings and the pilings required to build the building on the hillside. We're not gonna leave that to chance. If the commercial kitchen goes forward, for example, we have to have fire suppression engineered, we have to have a couple of those things, but they're hoping to do as much of it between the two of them as they can from a structural, civil point of view. And so, he, he said he's talked to Brent even yesterday, and they're gonna work towards trying to get as much of a blueprint out as they can.
Okay. That's good. Seven C, councillor Self, that one may interest you, is the ACP resolution of support to have that regional EMS person?
I don't want to let you know about it, councillor, but...
Do you know something about that one? I was the one that was with you, that's right, too.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it, Jeff.
Want to talk about it, J D?
So, as you are aware, in partnership with the other municipalities in the county, there was discussions to bring a regional fire chief into the county and manage the fire and emergency response. The negotiations kind of came to a stop point on that, and the group decided that there was, there would be some benefit to bringing a third-party consultant in to do a general fire services review and to assess the different stations and policies and practices, governance, equipment, training, a full-scale review of the stations, and that the existing management would then be able to take that review and implement changes, and we'd see improvements from that. And so, in an effort to move that forward, the administration has taken the lead in an ACP grant to provide funding for that. And so, the resolution before you now is, has been given to the other municipalities as well, and if granted from the provincial government, then that will cover the full fee for the consultant on the project.
Councillor Self?
I'll make the motion that be it resolved that we authorize the town of Carstens to participate in an application for the regional fire and emergency services review submitted by the town of Carstens under the intermunicipal collaboration component of the Alberta Community Partnership Grant. Further, that the town of Carstens, a participant, agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds. I think that's the longest motion I've ever read.
You've done well. You've done well. Further questions? Seeing none, are you in favor? Thank you very much, J D. You debriefed us well. Seven D, the letter to the town of Pincher Creek.
Nice one.
So, those are for Susan O'Rourke, and in fact, I had many of their staff that were infected, too, in that office, and we wish them all well. Seven E, business arising from, oh, I need, I need a motion to approve the letter.
I'll get that motion to approve the letter.
Okay, councillor Drew? Thank you. Are you in favor?
I will put it on letterhead.
Yeah, please, kind of pretty it up. Seven E, business arising from the delegation. I think we had a good discussion with our sergeant, so I don't know that we need to do anymore. Let's go to eight, committee and other reports. So, you have the November two thousand twenty financial report, is not yet the year end, there's another month to go, and that will come along with the review of the finances by the auditor. So, we, we are going according to plan, we're doing fine. Thank you to our administration for being careful with the management of the money. Any questions? No. So, on the ten correspondence, so here are three pieces of correspondence that we received regarding the dog park, regarding the frisbee, the golf frisbee, and they're all bring to light an element of safety and security. So, the letter from the Remington speaks about the, the history of the trail that had been designed for the purpose of cyclists, pedestrian, and horse carriages, and for them, they are concerned that the dog park will spook the animal, and I know it's true, dogs can spook horses, that's true, and that the, the frisbees might be a danger to the horse and the carriages. So, the story of the golf frisbee, we have referred it back to the park, so I don't think we need to discuss that one. The problem is the, the dog park, and so, how do we deal with that one? Councillor Brown, councillor Coop?
So, I think there's a misunderstanding when we call it a dog park. I think some people are thinking that this is going to be an area where forty dogs are all in it, and they're just running rampant through this place. To be clear, and I have visited dog parks because I don't have a dog, which, you know, anyway, I don't have a dog, so I'm not going to the park. And so, I, when I've gone to their meetings and I've talked to them, I needed to know what the love I was talking about, essentially. And so, what I've learned is that the dog park is going to be an area that is fenced in, that people can go with their dogs, but not everyone's there at the same time. Like, it, it is from sunup till sundown, and there is like two to three dogs in a park. And to be honest, when the Remington Center are taking their carriages down through that area, there are dogs that aren't leashed, I'm here to tell you, regularly down there, that are running free, and they deal with that. So, I just find it a little interesting that they don't appreciate the fact that we're having a contained area where these dogs will not, I mean, I'm a farm girl, I grew up with animals being spooked, I understand it, but I don't see this as this crazy, mad dog going nuts. I just, I don't see it, because it is a dog park, and dog parks are there for people to walk their animals in, for them to let them run in a contained area, but it is not a matter of crazy rampage of dogs. That's my perspective, at least. So, I don't, I don't see it. And the other part, sorry, part B, is that the best part about having the dog park down there is that it is not in somebody's backyard.
That's right.
Because that was the biggest complaint, no matter where else we talked about putting it, was, that's in my backyard, now you're, now you're, my land value is going to go down. The people that we talked to about having it along the river were thrilled with it, as were the dog people, I don't mean dog people, but people who own dogs, sorry, but as were they, because they're already walking their dogs along the river. It's just a really nice area, they're already there, so now they can be contained.
Okay. Councillor Barnes and councillor Coop?
My, I, I, I see where you're coming from, councillor Brown. There's a perception issue here that needs to be discussed with the Remington. I, I know that when, there's no veiled threat here, they're telling you that they'll just, they'll just continue bringing their carriages down there, they'll eliminate those rides. They're already, you know, at their limit, and I'd hate to see that stopped, honestly, I'd hate to see that stop. I, I just wish there was another scenic area that we could develop for that, so we're cramming a lot of stuff in there, the disc park, we've got a nice nature trail there, and it's wonderful, and I love to see the people out there with their dogs, and it does happen, and it's great. But I hate that, that threat of them shutting down the rides, I really do, and I'm, I have some concerns, I don't know what the answer is. But I, I wouldn't like to see them, because, I mean, he's saying it right in there. If the dog park and disc park, disc golf course were put in this area, we would no longer be able to safely deliver our carriage rides on the north side of the bridge.
Okay, I have something about that.
I see the disc golf a little bit more of a threat than the dogs. At any given day, even now, guys are out in their carriages all over town, there's dogs all over town, and they're worried about two or three dogs that are fenced in. I'd be more concerned about the dogs, when you're running your carriage wherever you're running it to, and there's a lot of, there's two or three people that are running them almost every day. I don't know what their concerns are.
Okay. Councillor Bentry?
These letters really opened up, as far as I'm concerned, a can of worms. And when I say this, I, 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 I'm gonna open it up right now, too. How much money did we spend on the, on those carriage lanes and those walking trails? And they were designed specifically for carriages to go up and down. Now, we have carriages, this is the twenty-first century, we have carriages out on our roads, and I've had complaint after complaint about people having to dodge horse droppings on the road, because, because when it, when it, when it, when it comes up, and you get it on your vehicle, if you, if you don't wash it off, it's like cement. And so, if, if he, if, if these people, where we, where we've developed these trails, then they need to be using them. Keep them off the, off the streets and the roads unless they bag those horses, and you're gonna get a lot of conflict, I'm gonna get flack now for saying that, but at the same token, then we, we look at Heritage Week, and all the, all the buggies are out on the roads and stuff like that. Well, we could make a, a ruling that the week of heritage days, then the buggies can be out on the roads, but in between time, they need to be on those trails. If they, if they want to hold us to those trails, hold it to the trails.
All right, so, there is something there that I can tell you regarding the story of bagging their horses. That came to council...
Yes.
A councillor, councillor Edmund was there, I can still see councillor Edmund. And then, his was, his desire to see the horses bagged. And Dr. Jones came to council and explained to council how difficult it is for the horse that has not been trained very early and very young to be bagged. And so, that was the difficulty with the bagging of animals that have not been trained with a bag. So, that's what I remember of the conversation, and that was changed, the thing. His point was also, Carstens is still a rural town, and that's what makes the beauty of this town, but that could be changed. Council can make a ruling, but you need to really try to get those people back at the table and explain to you their position, okay? I hear you, but people, Max, in his dope was the one that sent a letter saying, how can we not accept dog poo on our lawns and accept the droppings on the road? So, there was a whole discussion, if you remember, about that, so...
Simple solution, I, I really don't have a problem, though, it kind of adds to our town with the horses out there, but they can all pack a shovel, clean it up themselves. That's what I have to do, I take my dog for a walk, I have to clean it up. If they're gonna take their dog horses for a walk, they can clean it up.
If that's something that needs to be put in, in our bylaw regarding the animal, that can be brought back to the council.
Well, I didn't know you were gonna take this turn in this meeting, by the way.
Whoa.
It's also planned to be on your agenda next week.
All right.
Councillor Self had brought it up to me a little while ago.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, it's on the list for the agenda in two weeks, by the way. I did not anticipate it going there tonight, but, but it will be on your agenda in two weeks.
Okay, so...
I can think about it for two more weeks, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that means do one a little longer.
Okay, councillor, councillor Brown?
I think it would be, I think it would be a good idea to have our town vet, Dr. Ryan Merkley, to come and maybe to invite the Remington Center, their, whoever's in charge, to come and have that discussion with him. Who better to talk about this than a veterinarian who works on a lot of small animals? Because he is the one who has been doing programming for the dog park, they've done fundraisers, all of that, Ryan has had a big, he's been a great help with. So, I think it would be reasonable to have him come forward and not shut that down, but maybe change, like councillor Barnes said, the perception, right? The perception is that it's going to be a crazy, mad dog experience in a dog park, and I feel like we're smarter if we have more information.
Totally agreed. Councillor Self?
Can I just say that one of the underlying elements of one of the letters that I have an issue with is the suggestion that this council should never make any changes to what's been made in previous councils. If that were the case, then I could go back and say, well, in my time on council, the soccer park was supposed to be a residential subdivision, so I want the whole soccer park torn out and turned into a residential subdivision.
Out.
I don't, by the way, because I'm very happy with the soccer park, but I don't think that we confeder councils from council to council for making decisions.
You're absolutely correct, and I support your point of view.
Okay, good, because that suggestion in there is probably troubling me more than anything.
And I spoke to Jeff about the same thing. It troubled me, too.
A virtual fist bump there.
Right, exactly. Because no, no council should have their hand tied by previous council.
Miss Relling.
Because we all represent, we all represent a different stage in the moving forward of our town.
Jeff, concerning the disc golf, have we had any... Jeff, concerning the disc golf, have we had anything come back from that for, for different locations?
The Parks and Act Committee hasn't met yet, and so they've been directed to go there first and look at a design that mitigates some risk. So, no.
Could, could that property that we own behind the soccer field be turned into a disc golf course?
It does not.
It can. I mean, you're just going back and forth on a square block, right? You lose some of that in appeal to the course as well, right? We're trying to jam everything in the most, in the prettiest part of the town, right? So we'll look at some of that, Counselor, and that, and that committee's been assigned to review it. But they haven't met yet.
We meet on the twenty-eighth.
Oh, okay.
So Mayor, can I go ahead and make a motion? Do I need to make a motion, or can I just make a recommendation that we have?
Make a resolution, Counselor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Clearly, that's what I'm doing. Yeah.
Yeah, do it formally.
I'm making a resolution to have Dr. Ryan Merkley come and speak to council in regards to the dog park, what goes on at a dog park, and...
To invite the Remington?
Yes, to invite the Remington Center to be a part of that conversation.
Okay. Comments? Are you in favor? Thank you very much. So that was actually the end of our conversation. So thank you so much for the media. We appreciate that. Counselor?
Move to go in closed session.
Do you want to take a recess?
After a break.
Yeah, stick to...
So...
Lock that up into one motion.
The break first?
Yeah, let's have the break first.
Okay, so all in favor of a break? Thank you. So you'll have five, 10 minutes? That's enough?
We should only have about a five-minute closed session.